What troop, what's your name and what troop are you with? Could the, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Ian. Sorry about that. Trustee Anthony.
President.
Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
For the record reflect that Clerk Segras is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Snyderman, absent, and Supervisor Williams.
Hello. Would like to call for motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have two, three, two sets of minutes for approval. Could I call for a motion to approve the minutes of August 8th, 2017?
So moved.
Support.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Call for motion to approve the minutes of August 9th, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now it's time in our agenda for citizens, non-agenda items, comments, and public comments. If there's anybody in the audience this evening that would like to make a comment that's not related to an item on the agenda, now would be the time. Seeing none. We do have guests also with us this evening from SEMCOG. We have with us Susan Stefanski, as well as Amy Mangus. Would like to make a brief presentation with regards to SEMCOG. Welcome, guys. Tim, who's going to help you get through the slides?
Thank you for having us here this evening. I'm Susan Stefanski with the Executive Office at SEMCOG, and I'm here with Amy Mangus, our Deputy Executive Director. We always enjoy the opportunity to visit with our members. Today, we're going to provide you with an overview of first, our organization, our recent planning activities, and also our efforts to implement our regional plans in Canton Township. SEMCOG currently has 172 members in the seven county region. You can see on this map, the members that are shaded in yellow are current members. Each member community votes to join SEMCOG, pays membership dues, and appoints delegates and alternates to SEMCOG's General Assembly, our full membership committee. Canton Township's delegate is currently Supervisor Williams, and the alternate is Municipal Services Director, Tim Foss. These are the people who vote on the behalf of the township and are our key contact people to SEMCOG from Canton. Membership at SEMCOG is organizational, so all of you are welcome to attend and participate in our meetings, attend workshops, which we call our SEMCOG universities, and contact our staff for any data and information you may need. Additionally, you are welcome to join one of our committees and task forces, which was where SEMCOG's most of our work is done. As an example, we are currently working to update our water resources plan. The development of this plan is guided through a 60-person task force, and Bob Valair is now currently on that task force, working with us on those efforts. High-quality data is a foundation of our work at SEMCOG. Our website is just one way we provide information about the region and your community. Stephanie Taylor, who staffs SEMCOG's Information Center, is eager to provide you with information and answer your questions. Please feel free to contact Stephanie at the email or phone number you see listed here. SEMCOG has a variety of data to assist local governments with planning efforts. The newest data available includes our recently released 2045 forecast, which projects the future economic and demographic outlook of the region. Key takeaways include modest population growth of about 8% from 2015 to 2045, as compared to 21% nationally during the same timeframe.
Both systems. The neurons are firing across the sky, coming back down.
Sorry about that. As I mentioned, much of our data is available on our website. One popular feature is our interactive mapping tool, which allows you to zoom into specific locations in the region and receive customized data on a wide range of topics, including traffic crashes, traffic volume, and also commuting patterns. This allows you and the public to access data relevant to your local area. Another new data source is our Park Finder. As you can see, it includes over 2,600 of the region's parks, and is searchable by location, park size and type, and by amenities, such as water recreation, sports and games, and In the year ahead, we will be convening a task force to look at coordination and regional gaps in our parks, trails, and recreation network. We will be looking for local practitioners and elected officials from across the region to serve on the task force and shape our priorities and policies related to parks. I hope Canton will consider this opportunity. At this point, Amy Mangus is going to present some of our regional plans and how they're being implemented in Canton Township.
Good evening, everybody. As Susan talked briefly, we work in the area of transportation, economic development, environment, and so in the area of transportation, one of the things we're charged with is development of a long-range transportation plan going out to 2045, and we're just kicking that off. We're excited how much, honestly, Canton Township and your staff is involved with a lot of our different groups at SEMCOG, including in the area of transportation. Supervisor Williams was just elected to serve on our Transportation Committee, which is really good for us to hear your perspective. And actually, next week, Carmen Palumbo, our Deputy Director of SEMCOG, is coming to your study session to talk about road issues in Canton Township as well. So as part of developing road projects in the 2045 future, we also do short-term transportation project planning, and in southeast Michigan, that's $1 billion a year in transportation road projects that happen, that come and get funneled through SEMCOG. And we work real closely with Wayne County Roads and Canton Township as a part of that. So one of the things in transportation is we are kicking off this long-range plan, and we're looking at public input. One is through an online tool, asking the public's priorities when it comes to roads and what are the most important things we should be working on. We're also going to be doing public meetings, which is, the next slide shows you the date in all seven counties and in the city of Detroit, one in the afternoon and one in the evening. So if you all don't mind helping get the word out on that, it's a great way for the public to let us know about what the priorities are. We have a lot of other plans we work on in the region, from traffic safety, to green infrastructure, to pedestrian and bicycle, to economic development. I'm just going to hit on a couple of those very quickly. We do have a traffic safety plan, and the reason I wanted to bring that up is we have some pretty interesting data out there. One is, we do safety analysis data, and we actually can come out and look at intersections in coordination with the Road Commission a lot of times, or MDOT, to see what are the issues, if you're having some sort of safety issues in your community. And so we have data to help support, and you can search it by all kinds of different ways. But one of the things that the data showed us is that while pedestrian and bicycle crashes are very small, when you look at the amount of crashes we have in our whole region, there's something like 2% of the, all the crashes. They account for 28% of the fatalities. And so we at SEMCOG, working with our local governments, have put together a program to really focus on the educational elements of pedestrian and bicycle safety. And that's one of the things, I just wanted to make sure you knew about that program. It's called Walk, Bike, and Drive Safe. We gave you brochures, I think, in your handouts today. We also have some giveaways. We have bike lights and reflecting bands that we are working through our local governments to distribute. So that's something, if you're interested, just to have at your township facility, or if you're having a festival, to help get, you know, try and get this out to the public along with the safety messages. We also do pedestrian and bicycle planning, and one of the big projects that we help administer at SEMCOG is the Transportation Alternatives Program, which is a funding source that funds a lot of different things, but a lot of people use it to put in additional bike paths in their community. And I believe that, I was told by our pedestrian and bicycle planners, that they have funded one, a $202,000 TAP grant for, I think it's the bottom right there, the historic Ford Plant Pathway along Cherry Hill Road. So, yep. And again, you guys are great partners in all of this. We also work on economic development. We have developed an economic development strategy for this region. We work really closely with the counties on this. So you'll often see us at, when the counties hold economic forums, we're there too, to make sure that we're all connecting as much as possible. And finally, let's go to the next, go two slides, if you don't mind. You can skip the next one. Yeah, go to the next one. Finally, SEMCOG also works a lot on legislation. So we have, every two years, we put together a policy platform. We go to DC. We work at the federal and the state level on actual legislation. But we also advocate, especially at the state level, on regulations that could be coming down. A couple successes, one that you guys are heavily involved in is we've been named one of the pilots in the state of Michigan by Governor Snyder to implement the pilot for mapping underground infrastructure and being able to coordinate the underground infrastructure with the above-ground infrastructure. And honestly, you know, your team here, between Tim and Dave Maurice and others, are leaders in our region, and we're really trying to take advantage of that, so that we can learn from them and try to apply this, not only across the seven counties, but across the state, to have a statewide database at the end of the day. On the regulatory side, we get involved in rulemaking, so right now, there's, they're looking at new rules for drinking water and new rules for sanitary sewers, and we have a civil engineer involved in both of those committees as well. Finally, I just want to see if you can put on your radar that we are hosting one of our general assemblies, which is October 19th, and it's at Cranbrook. The one that we host every fall, we have three a year, the one in the fall is more of an educational seminars, and so if you want to learn more about the water and sewer and stormwater infrastructure project that we're working on, and not hear it right from Tim, but hear it from us, you can come to that and hear about it. We're going to talk about transportation safety more, and transportation technology and automation. Always talk a little bit and have a session on economic development and education, and so we just invite you all, you don't have to just be the GA delegate or alternate, all of you are invited to come, it would be great. And with that, I just wanted to say thank you again for all your participation. You're great partners at SEMCOG, and we really appreciate it.
We absolutely do appreciate the relationship, and we are going to continue for years to come. Are there any board questions or comments at this time? Yeah, go ahead, Emery.
All of us have taken the survey that you have online.
Okay.
And it's a great survey, but now, it's really high-tech. So what do you do for people that don't have computer skills, or how are you getting their responses to them?
Well, one of the reasons that this is not the only way we're getting public input, by having the community meetings in all of the counties is one other way. We're also doing a statistical-level survey, where we're going out and having statistical significant information at the county level, actually, for people to be able to use. So if they're not able to necessarily do this, we're also putting it in notices in all the libraries, so that if they don't have a computer at home, they could go to the library. We also have actually read, we've read and taken the survey over the phone with some people that have had trouble, and they called us, and we read it that way, and tried to make it more ADA compliant. Our whole website is, but this, I don't think was originally, and we reworked it to make sure that it was.
Thank you, Amy. Do appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming in this evening. Also, I took Susan on a tour of Ford Road 275, Haggard E. Corridor there, and she's made it through three times today without any issues, so hopefully you'll make it the last time heading out of town.
I was going to say, she's going home a different way.
Be safe, be safe going home. Very good. Thank you, guys. Okay, that concludes citizens' agenda and public comment. Now I would like to call for motion from the Treasurer to pay the bills again this month.
Mr. Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Second.
Those in favor of paying the bills again, state aye.
Aye.
Those will be paid. Thank you. Now we are moving on to the consent calendar. If Clerk Segras could please lead us through.
Mr. Supervisor, I make a motion that the Board adopt the consent calendar as written with the items C1, to set a public hearing for consideration of a local government approval for the Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs Liquor Control Commission, liquor license application of Genova Pizzeria LLC for a new tavern license with the addition of an SDM license for the business located at 42911 Ford Road, Canton, Michigan, 48187 Canton Township, Wayne County. And additionally, with item C2, the resolution declaring September as Pain Awareness Month in Canton Township.
With that, Suzanne, would you be there at the podium? No, other Suzanne. Yeah. Paying this month, and for many years, you've been a partner with us, bringing this resolution to the Board. With that, I would like to present the resolution to you, and if you'd like to make comments, please do it at this time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you.
The podium assures.
It's really short, I promise. I just wanted to say, on behalf of the US Pain Foundation and the over 100 million Americans living with chronic pain, I'd like to thank Supervisor Williams for signing this resolution designating September as Pain Awareness Month in Canton Township. As a person living with invisible illnesses that cause chronic pain, I can honestly say that such actions validate that we are not alone in our pain journey. By designating September as Pain Awareness Month, the Supervisor's office is sending a strong message to our community about the importance of empowering one another to support those living with rare, complex, and/or incurable pain conditions. US Pain Foundation's mission is to educate, connect, inform, and empower pain patients, their caregivers, and healthcare providers, while also advocating on behalf of the entire pain community. Supervisor Williams' signing of this resolution falls in line with our organization's mission, and we are honored to be working alongside his office to create a more promising future for the pain community. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And I didn't hear a second when I made that motion. Is anybody interested in? Thank you. Treasurer Slavens?
Okay.
Paul, do you want to call a vote?
Yep. I'd like to call now for a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
So moved.
Wait.
Or?
We're already there, just?
Oh, those.
In favor?
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Carries. Very good. Thank you. Suzanne, again, thank you. Now it's time for the general calendar, and what I'm going to ask the Board to consider is a motion, because it appears that we have some folks in the audience, perhaps, that are interested in our last agenda item, G8. Is that correct?
Yes, that is G8.
Okay. But we also have a presentation this evening from Watuwa that I would like to grind through as well. So what I'm asking is, would the Board accept a motion to move Agenda Item G8 up to, now we'll call it G1A, right after the Watuwa presentation? Would the Board accept, or can someone make that motion on my behalf?
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the Board amend the previously adopted agenda, taking Items, Item G8, consider waiving the policy requiring formal bids in order to expedite demolition of a dangerous building at 715 Merrimack, to Item G0A, directly behind Watuwa annual budget approval.
Second.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Very good. The agenda's amended. Now moving into the general calendar. First item up is, once a year, we have the Watuwa representatives come in and speak to us with regards to the annual budget and approval of said budget. So that being said, Suzanne is representing Watuwa this evening. Suzanne Reel is, I'm sorry, your official title with Watuwa?
Accountant.
You are the accountant.
I am the accountant.
Okay, so this is, budgets are riveting stuff for me, so please proceed.
And I have great news, our budget's roughly $3.5 million lower than what we're projected to spend in the current fiscal year. That's due to our exiting of the Wayne County Rouge Valley Sewage Disposal System. And our budget, you guys are only approving the first page, which is a departmental budget. The rest of them is just the detail support, and it has already been reviewed by both our finance committee and our Board had a study session on it last month. There have been no changes to it since either of those meetings. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
We do have a motion, but have we read?
Mr. Su, did we make?
I don't think we've made the motion on Item G0.
If it would please the Supervisor, I make a motion that, oh, let me read the formal, let me read the formal model resolution here. I move that the Board adopt the resolution as written, whereas Western Township's Utility Authority has prepared a proposed budget for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2018, which has been reviewed by the Finance Committee on July 13th, 2017, and the Board of Commissioners on July 24th, 2017, and whereas the authority is required to submit a budget to each of the member townships for approval in August of each year, now therefore be it resolved that the departmental budget for the authority as presented on Page 1 of the proposed annual budget for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2018, in the amounts presented, is hereby approved.
Second.
Are there any board questions or comments at this point? Okay, seeing done. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, Suzanne. And now moving on to item, was G8, now G0A. Let me go to the summary. Okay, in summary, I would like to call for a motion to consider waiving the policy requiring formal bids in the order to expedite demolition of a dangerous building at 715 Merrimack.
Mr. Supervisor? I will be making this motion, there are two motions, so I hereby confirm the order of the hearing officer, and I move that the Board hereby confirm the order of the hearing officer and approve the demolition of 715 Merrimack, and waive the finance policy requiring formal bid in order to expedite the demolition and authorize the building official to award a contract to Belfort Property Restoration.
We have a support for the motion. Thank you. In summary, the property located at 715 Merrimack, Canton, has been in need of demolition since September of 2016. On June 27th, 2017, a dangerous building hearing was held, and it was determined that the structure needed to be demolished. The owner has failed to demolish the structure in the time allotted, so the Township will pursue demolition using the fire withholding in escrow. Any additional costs will be paid by the Township and recovered through a lien on the property. Since this is a dangerous building, and the issue has existed since September of 2016, it's imperative that the Township move quickly to demolish this property. Waiving the formal bid requirement will speed this process up also. The Township has requested quotes from three contractors, of which two have responded at this time. The lowest qualified was received from Belfort Property Restoration in the amount of $15,500, who are also are able to perform this demolition in the quickest timeframe. Let's see, I see we have several folks in the audience. I don't know if you'd like to make public comments or comment on this agenda item. Now would be the time to do that, if you're interested.
Attorney, please.
Yes, sir. Hopefully. Try to be.
Going on basic cable.
Yeah, it's going on basic cable. Families may be watching. A lot of folks right now, when they watch our meetings, typically, they're trying to fall asleep, so you don't want to get the blood pressure up.
We can wake them up.
Yeah, so, but if one of, maybe a representative or two could speak, and, I don't know if it's necessary, because if we move appropriately and quickly through this motion, we may be all set, and nobody may need to comment. I'm kind of seeing this.
So for those at home, because this meeting is recorded, any comments or questions from the audience will not get picked up on the audio? The, I'm just going to restate, the question was asked from a resident in the audience if the basement would be filled in after the demolition.
Tim can answer that, I believe the answer's yes, but we'll let Tim officially respond.
Correct, yes. Yeah, the concrete foundation and the basement floor will be removed, and then it'll be backfilled and compacted and restored to grade and finished with topsoil and seed.
And if we do vote affirmatively to proceed this evening, how quickly will work be able to begin?
The work will begin tomorrow.
Good. All right, I do see a question in the back. Sir, if you would approach the podium, state your name and address. For the record, we appreciate it. And then also, please limit comments to three minutes, if you could. I don't know how much time you'll need, but, okay.
My name is Paul Copper. I live next door in 707 Merrimack. Is the fence going to be taken down? Is the pool going to be taken down and associated decking? And is all the trash in the back of the yard going to be taken, to be removed?
Site will be entirely cleaned up based on the price that we've received, yes.
No pool, no, no pool, no deck, no garbage. It's going to be a flat piece of dirt when we're done.
No fence, nothing?
Nothing.
Bless you.
Process.
Thank you very much.
Bob? Bob, you approach, please. Name and address, Bob, please. Mr. Olson.
Personal. Okay, sorry. It's Rob Olson, 39769 Coronation. Yeah, this is just a blessing that this, the Township's got a hold of this thing and starting to move forward on it, because I would hate to be Paul Copper and the guy next door that you, they had to hose down your houses to save them from that catastrophe. But everything will, I think I talked to, what is your name, sir?
I'm Tim Foss, but you probably talked with Rob Kramer, our building official.
Yes, I did. And he has basically, you've affirmed everything he said. Somebody mentioned the car, though, and I'm sure that's going to go too. It's basically going to be a nice, clean lot. Everything's off there, including fencing. The pool was scary with the, I didn't even realize that was still there with water in it, but, you know, kids, we've been reported, been running in and out of there, because the one fence, you can just hop over easy, but the other one is a higher one. But like Supervisor said, I think it's a foregone conclusion, this is going to go down, so we thank you for your efforts.
And I can share with the Board that, a little presumptuous, but when I drove by about 52 minutes ago, there happened to be a Belfort vehicle, big old, what do you call them, backhoe? Parked in the lawn waiting to go to work, guys, so.
Who's responsible for the upkeep? Because he's already, I've already seen the city come cut the grass. Who's responsible for it at that point? Is he, is he being charged for it? He doesn't keep up with it.
So the question for those at home was asked by a resident in the audience, who will be responsible for the upkeep of the property after demolition?
The property owner, as is the case with any property in the Township, is always responsible for maintenance. If they fail to maintain the property, residents, or anyone, frankly, anyone can contact our ordinance department and public safety, file a complaint, and then if the property owner doesn't correct it within a reasonable period of time, our public works crews will go out and clean or cut the site, and then build a property. If it's unpaid, it rolls to the taxes, and ultimately, we recover our money.
I do believe that there was a potential that the property owner's daughter was maybe going to come this evening. I don't, I don't know. Doesn't appear so. Okay. Are there any board questions, comments that would like to be made at this time? Yes, Diane, please, go ahead.
Real quick, I just wanted to thank Rob Kramer and Tim for working so hard to get this done, and I know, Tim, you had mentioned, Belfort was able to get it done right away as the other company that put a bid in didn't give you a timeline, so this is wonderful that we can get.
Correct. We did, you know, as the board item referred to, when the packet went out, at that point in the week, we still only had the two bids. We got the third one very late Friday. It was slightly less expensive, but there were a number of conditions in the third bid, and there was a very low. bid, and there was a very limited time commitment by the third contractor on getting it done. So we felt still the best recommendation was to go with Belfour, who could take care of it right away.
Seeing no additional board comment at this point, like to call for a vote. Those in favor of the motion as presented, first motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a second motion?
Yeah, just to pay for it now. Mr. Supervisor, I further authorize the Finance Department to make the following budget amendments to record demolition expense and revenue from both those accounts listed in your packet in the amount of $15,500.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, guys. You're all, you're all more than welcome to stay. We'll be here probably another hour or so.
Had to get to sleep.
Right. Night, folks. Okay, new, moving backwards now to G one, that'll get us back in the rhythm here. G one, consider first reading of an amendment to Appendix A zoning code of ordinances for the Singh Executive Park rezoning.
All right, and this is also going to be in the form of two motions. Mr. Supervisor, I move to introduce and hold the first reading of the proposed amendment to Appendix A zoning of the code of ordinances for the, for the request to rezone the subject area within Singh Executive Park Wayne County Subdivision Plan Number 568, as shown on the map, from C three Regional Commercial District to LIR, or Light Industrial Research District.
Support from Diane?
Thank you.
Diane Slavens? In summary, the applicant is proposing to rezone the subject property from C three Regional Commercial to LIR, which is Light Industrial Research District. The property is designated mixed use on the future land use map of the comprehensive plan. This allows for the consideration of C three Regional Commercial, LIR, Light Industrial Research, and Office O one zoning. The business park was, back in 1998, zoned Light Industrial Research. In '26, the undeveloped portions of the park were rezoned at the request of the developer to go to C three. And then, as the markets changed, it was rezoned for C three at the time for the Sky Zone trampoline business. Singh Development now feels the market's more conducive to light industrial use and is now requesting the remaining central portion of the site be zoned back to Light Industrial Research, which probably makes sense in light of the Advanced Vehicle Technology Center coming to Willa Run Airport. Are there any board comments, questions?
I'll just, if I may, Supervisor. I, no, I, I think, I like to see the Light Industrial Research coming to that corridor. I think it's going to complement the regional trends well, and I, and I think it's the direction that I, I would like to see. And I think we've talked about Michigan Avenue heading, so I'm excited that Singh is a partner in doing this. I think it's great.
Seeing no other board comments or questions, those in favor of the motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a second motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I, I move to table consideration for the amendment for a second reading on Sep, one moment, Sept, I lost my place, September 12th, 2017.
Second.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Very good. Item G two, consider approval of preliminary site plan for Brookwood Park detached condominiums and variance to the condominiums ordinance.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the resolution as follows. Whereas the project sponsor has requested approval of a variance to the condominium ordinance to allow 26 units on a dead end cul-de-sac and preliminary site plan for Brookwood Park detached condominiums located on the north side of Cherry Hill Road between lots and Hanon Roads on tax parcel, the tax parcel numbers listed. And whereas the planning commission reviewed the site plan and made a recommendation to approve the request for the variance and preliminary site plan approval, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the request of the petitioner to approve the variance to the condominium ordinance to allow 26 units on a dead end cul-de-sac and preliminary site plan for Brookwood Park detached condominium on tax, the tax parcels listed, subject to any and all applicable state and local development regulations.
Second.
Summary, the, the project sponsors, and I believe Mr. Boji, representing Boji Development, is with us this evening, are proposing a 26 unit, a single-family detached condo on the 6.6 acres. The resulting density is four units per acre. The stormwater detention pond is located at the north end of the site, which can be seen in the map on the screen. And ordinance limits dead end cul-de-sacs, streets, to 20 units. The other limitation is a maximum road length of 1,000 foot, and the proposed low, road length is only 600 foot. The fire code only requires a second point of access if there are 30 or more units. The proposed housing product will be two-story homes. Final design of the proposed home will be reviewed with the final site plan. Are there any board comments, questions? Anne Marie, please.
Since we don't have the benefit of the minutes, because they haven't been approved yet, so we just had this meeting in August. So I just want to let everybody know what the discussion was. Basically, we voted for two, the, I was one of the people that voted no on this, and the reason is, is because the ordinance currently only says to have 20 units on a dead end cul-de-sac, and we're putting 26 here. And, and Tim, of course, you can correct me. And basically, it does not match the zoning. So the zoning and the ordinance do not match right now. I think the zoning allows for a little bit more. However, because the current ordinance did not allow for 26 units, we're saying we wanted to stick to the ordinance of 20 units. There were concerns about parking. Also, just there's one entrance and exit. Since there's, it's under 30 units, you don't require a second access, so there's only one access onto Cherry Hill. And then we've added six additional units. So because of that, I voted no. And so did one of the other planning commissioners that day.
Well, the planning commission did approve this five to two. I think it'll probably be in our notes here.
Four to.
Four to, four to. Okay. Are there any other questions or comments specifically for Mr. Boji? Go ahead, John.
Josh, the fact that there's only one entrance, from a fire department standpoint, I know it's not required, but do you have any feelings? And you got that narrow road there, it's.
Yeah, I don't, I haven't seen the plan, so I don't know the width of the road, but obviously that's a concern. Most of our trucks would have no problem navigating that cul-de-sac. When you, when you look at our larger ladder truck, that's where the, the issue would be. But if the road's wide enough, then it certainly allows us the opportunity to back out of that street, and we have those in other areas of the township. But if it meets the fire code, that's, that's what we go by, is the international fire code.
Tim, as I understand, if the project was voted down, they could come back in for variance?
What's being requested tonight is the approval, including the variance. Yeah, so the variance is basically allowing the additional six units on otherwise a cul-de-sac street. 20 is the normal limit. In this case, they're requesting 26.
Is there a reason that we have it at 20?
Probably how the ordinance was constructed, whenever it was constructed, you know, years ago.
Go ahead, Diane.
Is there a reason why they have not changed it, increased it from 20, do you know? Tim?
No, I don't, I don't know. You know, it's kind of one of those things where these are dealt with on a case-by-case basis. Somebody could come in with 25, or 24, or 27. And then during the design review process, that's when, you know, some of these discussions occur before it goes to the planning commission. So staff internally work with the developers on, on each one of them on a case-by-case basis, and then make their recommendation to, to the planning commission, and then planning commission to the board. So.
Each one of these situations, I always like to drive out to the site or get a good feel for the flow, what's below, you know, what's on either side of it, in front of it and behind it. And I don't know if you can go out to one of your maps, there'll show what's surrounding this development.
I'm not sure that I have an aerial. I'll just, I'll just run through them for you here, so you can take a look. But there's, the, well, Cinnamon Point Apartments are immediately to the, to the west of this, on Cherry Hill Road, right here, if you will, kind of on the bottom side of, of where the condominium project is being proposed. That's a more dense development than what, what Mr. Boji is proposing on his parcel of property. And then it's vacant land to the east of this, and then you have what we more affectionately call the Woodcutter's Property, just west of there, a guy who kind of cuts wood for a living and stockpiles wood and sells it from his, from his property.
And in the vacant piece between Franks and the, this project, what is that zoned currently?
Pretty sure it's also two, but I'd have to.
Master Plan R six.
R six?
Right, and probably.
Oh, it's this site.
Probably currently zoned two.
So it is a, it's a lower density moving out of the apartments into other lower density developments?
Next three parcels east of the apartments are all master planned for R six.
So it is, it's a transitional piece, it really is, in my eyes. So I'm comfortable.
Right, I think that was described when they went through the rezoning process a few months back.
Clarify with Anne Marie, because I didn't know anything about this. So what the zoning says is one cul-de-sac is 20? And that's it?
That's what the ordinance says. Or dead end cul-de-sac, it's, the maximum's 20.
We have 24.
Yeah, they're 26.
26, good.
The condo ordinance limits dead end cul-de-sacs to 20 units or 1,000 feet in length, but the fire code for safety limits to 1,000 feet or 30 units.
You have to have a second access.
Above 30 units for the fire code.
You do have a nice green space on the backside here.
Yes.
That's by making it a shorter run. So it is in between those two requirements for fire code. All right, any other board comments, questions?
Show an aerial view, too. I don't know if you don't have the map.
There, there's not aerials attached in the packet, no.
Yeah, I mean, on Google Satellite, but we can, I can show them.
Yeah. If the board wants to see it, I can, I can load that.
May I?
Go ahead, Michael has a question.
A question, if I may, to Director Foss. Is that true, that is, is the restriction, because I'm looking at the language of the RBA, in the executive summary, does not, my question then is, is, I apologize, is it or, or is it and? So, you know, the, the two limitations, if you will, on the, on the dead end cul-de-sac, is it, is it, is it 20 units or a maximum road length of 1,000 feet? Or is it 20 units and, I guess, I'm not as familiar with those ordinances.
Honestly, I have to pull up the provisions and read them for you as well. It's 20 units on a cul-de-sac is the, is the ordinance limit, but as he, as Mr. Boji noted, there's the 1,000 foot limit for 30, and they're below that number, below that threshold.
Below that threshold because of that pond in the back also, correct? Yeah, I mean, you, the road went from, is it 600 feet? Because you have that basin in the back.
The road is only 600 feet long. Yeah.
And the, when it came to the planning commission, it was actually two motions, and then they combined it into one, which I think is confusing, too.
Okay, so here's the aerial map of the area. Serial's, sorry, just a little bit older. Let me scroll up. So this is Cinnamon Point Condominiums. This is Cinnamon Point Apartments. And this is the site that Mr. Boji is proposing the 26 units on. Trying to count, just for comparison's sake, but it looks like there's three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, plus a clubhouse. 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27. Looks like there's 28 units in the apartment.
They're stacked.
And they're stacked. For comparison's sake. So you can see the density is a little bit, just a little bit higher on the, on the apartment complex.
There are more than one exit out of there, entrance and exit, or is there?
They just have one also.
So I'm reading subsection four of the condo ordinance, and it does say cul-de-sac must not exceed 1,000 feet in length and may not provide access to more than 20 units lots in a condominium development. So it looks like it's not 1,000 or 20. It looks like it's 1,000 and 20. So, I mean, we're voting whether or not we're going to amend our own ordinances, which we, we can, obviously, but, but that is the provision. It does have the two limitations as opposed to one or the other.
Right, it's not so much that you're amending an ordinance, you're just basically granting a variance from the existing ordinance for the purposes of this project.
That would be in line with the fire code.
Correct.
Also, another step in this process after tonight's event, but the, when I look at that map, I see lower density in this development, and I see plenty of nice green space bands in between and around and behind these facilities as well, which is nice.
Also spaced the homes out further than what was necessary. The ordinance is 10 foot between structures, and we're going 15 feet between each home, an extra five feet.
Is there a reason why the apartments have higher density? Do they have a different, different ordinance for the number of units on a dead end?
You know, it was, it was approved a long time ago. I'd have to go back. I can get you that answer certainly after the board. We can research the, the file from whenever Cinnamon Point Apartments were constructed and, and send you a note on that. It's a long time ago.
This property is also, was master planned R six, which allows eight units per acre. So we could have potentially had almost 50 units on the site had we gone to the highest zoning.
Seeing none? Okay, we have a motion in front of us. Those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
No.
So I see a tie. No, what do I see?
No, I voted, yeah.
So in a, in the event of a three-three decision, the result is no.
I voted yes, in favor.
You need a majority to pass a motion, so the motion failed.
We appreciate your time, sir. Now let's move on to item G three. Is, consider approval of 28-month extension of the existing contract with Liquiforce, Liquiforce Services as needed sanitary service repair services, sewer repair services.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve a 28-month extension to the existing contract with Liquiforce Services for an annual amount not to exceed $250,000 with an end date of December 31, 2019.
In 2014, the board approved a three-year contract with Liquiforce Services to provide as needed trenchless technology repair and reuppilation services for our sanitary sewer system. Liquiforce Services has recently requested a two-year extension to the original contract and is offered to keep the same 2014 rates. Staff is recommending approval of the extension. Are there any board comments or questions? Seeing none. Those in favor of the motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item G four. Consider award of contract to Red Zone Robotics for sewer inspection services for the Township's SAW grant, S A W grant, project and approval of a budget amendment.
This is going to be in the form of two motions. Mr. Supervisor, I move to award a contract to Red Zone Robotics for sanitary sewer inspection services for an amount not to exceed. to exceed $1,448,839.
On July 27, 2017, the township received six formal bids for CCTV inspection work necessary for the completion of the SAW grant project. The township and their project consultant, OHM, analyzed the bids and have recommended the second lowest bidder to be awarded the contract. Rational for selecting the second lowest bidder is contained in the recommendation of the award letter from OHM dated August 10, 2017. The quoted cost as stated is less than the amount originally estimated in the grant application approved by the state MDEAQ. A contingency is not required as the work scope will be adjusted, God bless you, to fit within the approved grant. Are there any board questions or comments? Seeing none. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to, the board approved the following budget amendments. An increase in the expenditure in the professional services account of the $1,448,839. And then an increase in two revenue accounts for the state grant revenue of $1,080,000 and fund balance appropriation for $368,839.
Oh, are there any comments on the second motion?
I just, they are, just wanted to clarify that there was one grant, and then one is a fund balance appropriation. I kind of misspoke. I apologize.
Clarification? Okay, we have support. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G5. Consider approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Wayne County and Canton Township for improvements to Flodon Park.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to authorize yourself, the supervisor, to sign the intergovernmental agreement between Wayne County and Canton Township for improvements to Flodon Park and authorize, authorize Finance Department to make necessary budget amendments to the 2018 budget to record the Wayne County contribution and the related expenditures.
Wayne County has agreed to fund improvements to tennis and basketball courts at Flodon Park through the Wayne County Parks Village in an amount of $117,697 for the 2016-17 fiscal years. An intergovernmental agreement between Wayne County and Canton has been drafted for approval by both governing authorities and has been attached in your deck. Are there any questions or comments regarding this item? Seeing none. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G6. Consider approval of bid award for sound system upgrades in the summit and approval of the budget amendment.
This is going to be in the form of two motions, provided the first one passes. Mr. Supervisor, I move to award the bid for the sound system upgrades in the summit to Falner Electronic Laboratories Incorporated, 7235 Jackson Road, Ann Arbor, Michigan, 48103, in an amount not due, in the amount of $20,660, with funds to be paid from account number listed, the capital outlay, computers, and equipment.
Obviously, it gone out to bid here. We've got six separate bids. This is the low-bid provider as well. If any of us have attended events out at the summit, this needs to be done. Are there any questions or comments regarding this item? Yes, go ahead, Anne Marie.
How long does this equipment, is this original equipment from when it was built 20 years ago, or how?
Yes, it is.
Oh, it is? Okay, so it lasts about that long? Okay.
It lasted not quite this long.
Not quite this long.
I would say about 17.2 years. It's been miserable for a couple of years.
Thanks.
Were there questions? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G7.
Before that, Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the following budget amendments. A decrease in the expense, which would be a transfer to the fund balance for $20,660, and an increase in the expenditure account, capital outlay, computers, and equipment for the same amount, $20,660.
Second.
Favor of the second motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item G7. Ahead of myself here, come back down. 2017 budget adjustments.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the attached listed budget adjustments to the 2017 budget.
Township adopted 2017 budget, September 27, 2016 board meeting, and various adjustments have been made since then. At this time, I'm asking the Board of Trustees to approve the attached budget adjustments to the 2017 budget year. A description of the budget adjustments is explained in your attachments. And we have Director of Finance Wendy with us this evening. If there are any board questions. Are there any board questions or comments, please?
Additionally, my first question is, I didn't hear a second, so did somebody?
Second.
Oh, sorry, Diane. I apologize for not hearing. That is my only question so far.
Good. Are there any additional board questions or comments? Seeing none. Those in favor of the motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on, item G.
The end.
The end. Okay, very good. Did we take care of, boy, oh boy. When did we take care of, did we do in consent liquor?
Yes.
We did that, so that's.
We did in fact, but Mr. Yun has decided to stick with us for the entire meeting?
Did know that, okay, that, yes, we did do it. It passed. And you didn't have to sit through the whole meeting, but, oh.
Thought it was interesting.
Good. All right, well, there you go. Well, at a future board meeting, come back and introduce yourself during public comment, then. Very good. I believe that concludes the, the business items in front of us this evening. Is there any board comments? Any staff comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, call for a motion to close our meeting.
So moved.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Have a good evening, guys.